I would like to confirm quorum, Mr. Carrillo. Roll call.
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, Mayor O'Caña.
Here.
Councilwoman Ochoa.
Here.
Councilman Plata.
Here.
Council, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Garza. Councilman Vela.
Figured it out.
Councilman Vela.
Here, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Anna. I want to officially call this meeting to order. And I'm gonna call for regular meeting agenda item number two. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Perez to, to lead us in that agenda item. Mr. Perez?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for joining into our meeting this afternoon. I, I will ask if you could just please bow your heads for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of life, the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Give us the spirit of service and guide us to the leaders for our community's needs. Renew us from the strength of your presence and joy of helping our neighbors. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That'll take care of regular meeting agenda item number two. Moving right along, I'm gonna call for regular meeting agenda item number three, Chief Dominguez.
Good evening, Mayor City Council. Uh, the following is the proclamation for National Police Week. And it reads as follows. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of the Mission Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Mission. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, risks, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against suppression or intimidation. Now therefore, we, the City Council of Mission, the week of May tenth through the sixteen twenty twenty, the National Police Week, call upon all citizens of Mission and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May tenth through the sixteen twenty twenty as Police Week with a retreat ceremony in which all of our people join in commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibility have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation of preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Mission, Texas, to observe Monday, May eleventh, twenty twenty, as Peace Officer Memorial Day in Mission, Texas, to honor those peace officers whose their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have be- become disabled in the performance of duties, proclaimed on this the twenty-seventh day of April, twenty twenty.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve, Mayor.
You have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? A motion carries. Your proclamation is approved, Chief Dominguez.
Thank you, Mayor of City Council.
Calling regular meeting agenda item number four, Ms. Longoria.
Mayor, I'll make the announcement on the census.
Okay, Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Yes, again, thank you all for, for joining the meeting. I would like to remind everyone to complete the census. Um, we understand that COVID nineteen has provided great challenges in our community and will certainly have adverse effect in our economy. So the data collected from the census is critical in this situation like these and is used to determine how much funding will be allocated to help stabilize our community. As of, of April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, uh, forty point seven percent of Mission's population has submitted their census. We need to reach a hundred, a hundred percent. It only takes a few minutes. It's easy, safe, and important. To respond online, visit www dot twentytwentycensus dot gov. By phone is one eight four four three zero zero two zero two zero. That's in English, and if you want a telephone number in Spanish, it's one eight four 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 six eight two zero two zero. Or complete your paper form and return it as soon as possible. The rate of response for Texas is forty-eight point six percent. The other counties at thirty-five point four. It's very, very important. Again, I want to emphasize everyone to pre-submit the census information. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Perez. Uh, it's critical and it's very important from the, from the standpoint of not only funding, but just the fact that you get counted and you become part of the City of Mission. And, 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 and keep in mind that this record is good for ten years. Ten years, so if we lose funding one year, you can multiply it by ten and that tells you that the money we're, we've been, we can lose in the City of Mission in, in ten years. Moving right along, regular meeting agenda item number five, Ms. Enriquez.
Mayor, I have a question, a real quick question.
Uh, okay, goes back to, let me recall, regular meeting agenda item number four, on twenty-twenty census.
Yes. When, when, uh, it's reported that about forty percent of the, of the population has responded, that number, that population number is what was reported ten years ago, right?
That's correct, and all new ones are not, not included in that.
So, so really, if, if we think about it, you know, that's, that's, that's really a, a
Lower.
A lower number, so we're really not at forty percent, uh, responding.
Yes, we don't have the data to be able to disaggregate it to, to who, who was there last year and this year.
Right.
This is the percentage of the number based on, on our population last year, you know, but it's, it's not matching per, person to person.
Okay, all right, just to be, just to be clear.
But for the public, if there's anybody out there, you know, that, that wasn't registered ten years ago, they begin to register now, you know, because we need the additional. We need a hundred percent of the citizens of Mission or the bodies that are inside our City of Mission that, that, that are, that are here. Uh, you know, we need for them to, to, to register, you know? And, and of course, uh, we, we do have some plans. Once we get a hundred percent of those people that, that, that were registered before, we're gonna have some teams to go out there and assist other people, especially those that, that request for assistance, to be able to get as many as possible on, on, on the census, but that's a great question, Mayor Pro Tem Garza. Now I'll call for Ms. Enriquez.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. First, I just want to say thank you for having me back. I did miss you all, so it's good to be here. So, um, uh, Mayor and City Council, it's been the busier time than ever, but of course, this would not surprise anyone given the circumstances that we are dealing with. But, uh, we want to be clear and make sure that our role in Mission is still the same, and that is to continue advocating and supporting our business community. The establishment of the Business Economic Recovery Committee by the Mayor, um, is used to serve. Um, the main goal is to guide our business community through engagement and education for adapting to the new norm of conducting business. So one of the goals is to increase sales revenues, but of course, being safe is number one. We want to build a resilient and strong community with a growth mindset business culture. Um, constantly, the guidelines are continuously being developed. Um, as we heard today, Governor Greg Abbott already announced that effective May one, there's a new guidelines for Phase One. So our goal is to pledge to, uh, educate ourselves and be well-informed so we can in turn, uh, educate our community and add value to our quality of life. But this is impacting everyone. Um, the committee members of the Business Economic Committee is, of course, myself, Brenda Enriquez with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Daniel Silva with Mission Economic Development Center, George Rice, uh, Five 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 Brewing, Aida Lerma, the Deputy City Manager for Mission, Fatima Garcia with the Mission Events Center, Diana Isaguirre with Isaguirre Engineering Group. Um, our committee did meet last week. Meeting every Friday at eleven AM. It was determined by the committee that we do need to add someone from the banking industry because they are often the first to know of monetary resources to our community. We want to have someone representing the banking industry.
You ready to go outside?
Some of our, some of our ongoing projects that we do have, we are working with the Mission Economic Development Center for a business impact survey. This is gonna be a survey that we will be rolling out hopefully within the next week uh, to our business, uh, community. We do, this is gonna be a self-reporting survey, so we will need everyone's help to, um, to ask, um, our business community to do, um, submit their survey. This survey will help us assess the impact and the guide of our efforts to come. So with that essay, that essay will be embedded in a resource website that we are working on. The website's gonna have links to the latest updates because like we said, they're continuously being developed and change as we go on. And, um, and so we gotta be ready for that. So that website is Yes. And then some of the outreach that we did, uh, learn, um, as we met, our committee members were, um, is one of the things that we do need or we have, uh, questions are clarity. Is there, um, you know, some of our business owners need a little more guidance from others? So one of the things we, we have out is wide educational webinars. So we will be having a Retail to Go Explain webinar that is taking place tomorrow at three thirty. So we do know that not everyone that is a business owner in Mission is a member of the Chamber. However, at this time, we ask, um, all businesses in the Chamber as we are, uh, constantly, um, updating our resources and we have webinars that are free to our business community because at the end of the day, it's about our, um, our, our community, making sure that it's a very healthy economy. So we're gonna make sure that we do relay this information to our business owners. Have them please follow the Chamber page and attend our webinars and feel free to contact the Chamber or the EDC, uh, for more information. We've also established a curbside blitz mission and this is an effort to encourage engagement and sales flow to restaurants and retailers since right now the Retail to Go, um, is in effect. But like we said, as, um, starting May one, we're gonna have to, uh, put on another webinar and Q and A so we can, uh, help educate our business community on do's and don'ts. Um, and like I said, it's gonna be moving forward because it's this Friday, then probably on May eighteenth, we've got new, new guidelines. So it's a point that we are up to date. Um, and now, uh, we will be, um, interviewing, uh, with our Public Relations Director at the City of Mission, Daniel Silva and myself, uh, so we can, um, communicate and be transparent with the community on what is going on regarding the business, uh, recovery efforts. So our business community knows that we are here to support them and everything that is happening. So like I said, we are, they feel, they feel the transparency with us. So, uh, Mayor and City Council, our job is even now more critical than it was before as we now are in the recovery stage to resurrect our businesses. Um, so we're excited and we look forward to it. And, um, hopefully, I will be submitting the next report to you at the next City Council meeting. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Brenda, for your comprehensive report and, and thank you for all the time and effort that you've put into, into really bringing our, our city businesses back, back to normal.
My pleasure, Mayor.
Let me open it for any of the city councils. If they have any questions directly to the, to Mission greater.
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay.
I'm good as well. No, Mayor, thank you.
No question for me.
Uh, thank you, Council. Uh, so I'll move right along again. Thank you, Ms. Enriquez.
Thank you.
For that report, uh, uh, we appreciate all your effort, you know? Regular meeting agenda item number six, departmental reports. In your packet, you have departmental reports. This is the time to ask any specific question to any of the department directors, if, if you have any questions. If not, I will, uh, I'm looking for council director.
I'll move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. And a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Uh, motion carries and regular meeting agenda item number six is approved. Regular meeting agenda item number seven, citizens' participation. I will open it for Ms. Carrillo. Do we have anybody that, that has signed up?
Uh, Mayor, nobody called in to sign up. I don't know if there's anybody online that would like to address the council at this time. If so, they can please state their name and address to the record.
And you will be allowed the maximum of three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Anybody from the public? Is there any indication, Ms. Carrillo, that anybody wants to talk? If not, so we can move on to?
No, Mayor, I don't get any indication that anybody would like to speak for citizens' participation.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Uh, I will move to, uh, regular meeting agenda item one point zero, which are public hearings. And I will ask, uh, I will call for one point, one point one A, and I'll ask Ms. Deluna to, to, to lead this one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item one point A, it's a rezoning. It's the north one fifty-three point seven of the west one fifteen point oh eight feet of Lot Four, Lot G, Wright Edition subdivision. This is from C three general business to R two duplex, fourplex residential. The applicant is Julio Abrigo. If the council is inclined to approve this rezoning, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. This, um, site is located between Mayberry Road and Highland Park along the, along the south side of East Tom Landry. The surrounding zones include R two to the north, which is duplex, fourplex, and general business to the east, west, and south. The existing land uses include commercial to the east and residential use to the northwest and south. The future land use map reflects general business. Thus, R two is a less dense and a good fit for this area. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Deluna. This is a public hearing. Anybody would like to, um, speak on a rezoning in favor or against? This is a public hearing. Anybody that wants to talk in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Ms. Carrillo, is there anybody indicating that they're, they wanna do a public hearing, uh, statement?
Isn't.
Ms. Carrillo?
No, Mayor, there isn't anyone indicating.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, in, in this, I will close the public hearing. And I'll, I'll, I'll move over to the City Council. If the City Council has any specific questions for the possible adoption of ordinance forty-nine zero seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. In this, I open it for final discussion. Is there any discussion by any other council members? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, ordinance forty-nine zero seven is approved, Ms. Deluna. And I would, I'm calling for one point one B.
Item B is a conditional use permit for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for the bungalows on Sherry's, which is located at thirty-seven hundred Plantation Grove Boulevard, being lots one and two, Sherry's Plantation Grove Hotel Bungalow. It is on Plan Unit Development and the applicant is Santu Bungalows LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this, uh, conditional use permit, an adoption of the ordinance would need to be needed. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Plantation Grove Boulevard and Santa Lorena. A CUP for the sale and outside consumption of alcohol was previously approved on June thirteenth, sixteenth of Perion Inn and Suites for a period of one year. Since CUPs are not transferable to others, a new applicant is applying for his own permit. For staff, they have nine employees. Parking, they have a total of three hundred and thirty-one parking spaces that are held in common. For the sale of alcohol, such uses need to be three hundred feet from residential uses. There are some apartments within the range, which is Las Misiones Apartments. Staff recommends approval for a period of one year to assess this new operation. No objection to a waiver of three hundred feet separation requirement from Las Misiones Apartments must comply with building, fire, and health codes and acquire a business license. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Ms. Carrillo, is there any indication that anybody wants to?
No, 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 Mayor, there is not.
Therefore, I'm, I'm gonna close, uh, this public hearing and open it for any direct comments from any of the city council members.
May I move to approve?
We have a motion to approve. In a second, in this, I open it for final, uh, comments by any of the council members. No comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, my, my question is, this is for, uh, one year conditional use permit, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, um, and so I'm sure the company also needed to, to reapply for their, uh, for their beer and, and liquor license, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so that, that license is given for a period of what time? How much time?
Two years, two years.
Mayor, it, it would be my recommendation to do a two-year, uh, permit uh, to coincide with their, uh, beer and alcohol, uh, license, uh, being that this is a continuation of a, of a, of a, of a business that's been there in, uh, so, uh, I, my recommendation would be to, uh, extend it a two-year instead of just one year.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ms. Carrillo. I'm gonna need to ask for, for, uh, Mr. Martinez's, uh, assistance.
They can rescind. Uh, Mayor, they can rescind their motion or, uh, reconsideration.
Okay.
I will rescind my motion and add the two years.
Do we, the Your second has been rescinded?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, and you're second in the new motion, right?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. In this, I open it for final discussion. Any final discussions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? A motion carries, but the, for the record, let us, let us match the two years with the Texas, uh, Alcohol Beverage Commission license.
Okay.
Okay, so ordinance forty-nine oh eight has been approved. I will call for one point one C, Ms. Deluna.
Item one point one C is a conditional use permit renewal for the sale and outside consumption of alcoholic beverages for Marisco's El Siete Mares, number two. This is located at twenty-five hundred East Expressway eighty-three, suite one hundred, lot five B, Sherry and Play subdivision. It's currently zoned C three commercials. The applicant is Siete Mares Mexican Seafood Casino LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, an adoption of the ordinance would be needed. This item, this item is located within the Coles Commercial Plaza approximately a quarter mile east of Sherry Road along the south side of Expressway eighty-three. The most recent approval was on February twenty-sixth, twenty eighteen, for a period of two years. The hours of operation are Monday through Sunday from eleven to nine PM. There are four employees. It is noted that the parking is held in common for a total of six hundred and fifty-seven parking spaces. Staff is recommending approval for a period of three years, at which time the applicant will have to renew his CUP and TABC license, waiver of the three hundred foot separation requirement from residential neighborhoods, and must comply with all city and TABC code requirements. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this conditional use permit? Ms. Carrillo, is there any indication that anybody is gonna give us a statement?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Uh, I will close this public hearing and I'll move it over to any comment, specific comment by any of the council members.
Mayor, I'm move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. In this, I open it for discussion. Any discussions on this issue? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Uh, motion carries. The conditional use permit is approved under ordinance forty-nine zero nine. I will open it for one point one B.
Item one point one D is a conditional use permit renewal to keep a portable building for car sales office use at nine sixteen West Expressway eighty-three, being lot one, Carmart subdivision. It is currently zoned C three commercial and the applicant is Jesus Sanchez. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. This property is located on the north side of US Expressway eighty-three, West of American Legion Post ninety-three. The CUP was last approved on April twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, for a period of three years with the understanding that at the end of those three years, a permanent building would be required. The applicant is asking for a one-year lifetime consideration. Within one, that one year, they are gonna do a permanent structure. Staff is recommending approval with the understanding that at the end of the, the one year, the permanent structure should be ready. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? Ms. Carrillo, is anybody indicating that they're gonna give us a statement?
No, Mayor, no one is.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna close this public hearing and I'm gonna move it over to the council for direct input. Any, any of the council members have direct input on this item?
I need, I'm move to approve the renewal.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. In this, I open it for any discussion by any of the council members. There be no discussion, then, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? A motion carries and ordinance forty-nine ten has been approved, and I'm calling for one point one E.
One point one E is a conditional use permit renewal for a drive-through service window for the area Carmelita. It's located at six hundred North Sherry Road, Suite F, being lot one, Ezra's Vegas subdivision. This is commercially zoned and the applicant is Carmen Rivera. If the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located at the northeast corner of E six Street and Sherry Road. The CUP was last approved on April tenth, twenty seventeen, for a period of three years. The applicant is seeking to renew her permit. Days and hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from seven to nine PM and Sunday from seven to seven. She has three employees. Parking is, there are fifty-eight parking spaces held in common. Staff is recommending approval subject to a three-year reevaluation, that CUP is not transferable to others and to continue compliance with building, fire, health, and sign codes. This is a public This is a public hearing. This matter is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? Ms. Carrillo, is there any indication anybody's going to give us a statement?
No, Mayor, there is not.
And then I will close the, this public hearing and I'll move it to any of the council members to give direct input.
I'm going to approve the renewal.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, I recognize Mr. Vela as a second, the record. And, uh, and, uh, I'll open it for discussion by any of the council members. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and ordinance forty-nine eleven has been approved. I'm calling for one point one F.
One point one F is a conditional use permit renewal for a home occupation for a two-share beauty salon at eight oh four West Twenty-Fourth Place, being Lot seventy-four Chaparral Heights subdivision. It's residentially zoned and the applicant is Ermelinda G. Salazar. If the council is inclined to approve this CUP, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet.
That they want to.
West of Holler Road along the north side of Twenty-Fourth Place. This two-share, two-share hair salon has been in operation since November seventeen twenty-ten. Miss Salazar is the only applicant and she has been in compliance with the home occupation regulations. The CUP was previously approved on April ten, twenty seventeen, for a period of three years. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday from ten to seven and Saturday from ten to five by appointment only. Staff is recommending approval for a period of three years. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? Is there anybody indicating, Ms. Carrillo, that they're going to provide us with a statement?
No, Mayor, there's not.
Okay, thank you. I will close this public hearing and move it over to any of the council members to give specific, uh, feedback.
I have a question.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh, indicated there, that there was only one applicant, but does she have any employees?
No, ma'am. She is the only person. She has a, an extra share just in case somebody goes there with another person, but she's the only person running the business.
Okay, all righty. Mayor, I have a question. Suzie?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. You're doing so awesome.
Thank you.
I'm taking over the meeting. Um, this woman, I would like to know how many hair salons operate at their homes at this time? Because she's already been given three years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How many others exist like hers?
That I recall, it's only her. We used to have about three, but most of the other people have already closed down or moved to a commercial location.
I guess so. So that's my question, Mayor. I kind of want to see where we're going to go in the future with these type of businesses. Are we going to have more allowed to conduct this at their homes? Because I thought we're only going to.
I think, I think we can only address the, the item on the agenda, uh, Ms. Ochoa. And that item, maybe we need to put it on for discussion for, for future, uh, city council meeting, but it is, it's a great point, you know? Uh, how long are we going to have that kind of setup, you know? Uh, but right now, it's my understanding from, um, Ms. Deluna, it's only one, so we need to determine whether we're going to continue her or not.
Can I make a motion to table this item and bring it back after further discussion?
Yeah, I will accept your motion, but I, I'm will be waiting for a second.
What's the motion to second for?
To table the item.
Table, so we can discuss it further if we're going to want this because she's already given three years. And so we're making this the, staff is adding another three. Uh, you want to discuss it at a different meeting?
Yes, with more detail.
Okay.
You, you want to discuss this issue or the issue of, of allowing, allowing, uh, uh, this kind of setup at, in a home setting?
Yeah, I want to get further discussion of allowing it in the further, uh, setting, if we're going to allow it in the future or not, or how the business has been going. Because, yeah.
Good.
If, if I may interrupt, uh, the applicant has, uh, her husband is sick. That's why she has not moved to a commercial location. That's why she has to be considered for another period of three years. But the board is inclined to table it or no action?
Right now, right now, we have a motion, but no second. I'm waiting, I'm waiting for a second or it's going to die, the motion's going to die for lack of second.
I'll second.
Will you second for the table?
Yeah.
Okay. And this I open it for further discussion. Go ahead and continue the discussion.
I, I would like us to see, to, to go ahead and take action on this item, uh, only because there, there, the reason for the home occupation, uh, is not only just temporary, but also for those that want to work from home, uh, in like the, like your, your, your smaller daycares that, uh, that, uh, you know, the mamas want to stay home with their kids and they'll take on additional kids to, to kind of, as me. So the, this, the home occupation theory is, is really a twofold thing. It's a temporary thing, but it's also for those that, that want to stay home for whatever reason they want to stay home for.
I, I, I'm in agreement with you, Ms. Garcia. You know that, uh, I think that, uh, we need to take action on this because I don't want to let, leave this applicant, uh, hanging on there, you know, uh, whether to tell her yes or no, you know, as, as far as that is concerned, so. Uh, but right now, we have a motion and a second to table. I'm just opening it for further discussion. Any other further discussions?
I would like to see if we can help her out, but I do understand what Jessica is saying. Um, maybe we need to discuss this later in a workshop or something because, uh, maybe put a limit or look at it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, if there's something that, uh, like in this particular case, that this having to do with illness or stuff like that, I mean, well, we, we can take that into consideration, but I do see a lot of some of this renewals that if we don't pay attention, they can go for years and years. And there's also the people that are paying commercial, I mean, property taxes on a business location and rent. So it's like you say, it's a twofold, but for right now, I would like to at least do a one-year or two-year, uh, renewal to keep her, um, earning income.
Mayor, I will rescind my motion and redo it for one year until we further discuss this topic.
Okay. I'm, I need to ask that your, Mr. Vela, are you going to rescind your second?
Yeah, I'll rescind mine as well and go with a one-year.
And, and you're going to, uh, second Ms. Ochoa's, uh, motion?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a motion and a second. I'm still, I'm going to open it again for any final comments from any of the city council members. If not, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Ordinance forty-nine twelve is, uh, is approved with the recommendations and, uh, uh, on the motion for the record. And, uh, I will call one point one D. Ms. Deluna?
Item one point one G is a conditional use permit renewal for Brian Event Center and Bed and Breakfast at eleven thirteen East Mall Two Road, being a one-point-zero-one-acre tract of land out of Lot twenty-nine dash ten, west addition to Sherland subdivision. The property is owned agricultural and the applicant is Ariel P. King. If the council is inclined to approve this CUP, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. This property is located on the northwest corner of Brian Road and Mall Two. The CUP was previously approved on May twenty-two, twenty seventeen, for a period of three years. Mrs. King is seeking renewal of her permit, but she is wanting to be considered for life of use. The hours of operation vary depending on the, the property, how it's rented. It's available every day of the week. She is the only employee managing this location. There are a total of nineteen parking spaces on-site. We note that there were several letters in favor of her request. There was one, not so much in opposition, but a concerned citizen regarding the outdoor amplified music. We did check with the police department and there was no reports of any calls for this location. Staff is recommending approval for life of use. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the conditional use permit renewal? Ms. Carrillo, is there anybody indicating that they want to give us a statement?
No, Mayor, there's not.
I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to move it over to any of the council members for, for direction.
I'm going to approve.
We are motion to approve as, as a life?
Second.
Hold on. Mr. Plata, you, you need to clarify the motion to, eh, to indicate that it's a life, the life of use or, or three years.
You're muted, Mr. Plata.
Did you hear me, Mr. Plata?
You're on mute.
Yeah, I, I got it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't, I don't mind going by the life use of the, on the, on that particular location.
Can you, can you state it in your motion, please?
Yes, I would like to move to, uh, approve the conditional use permit for the Brian Event Center and Bed Breakfast at the Mall Line for a life use.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Ochoa. Are you seconding his motion?
Second his motion.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Ochoa. This I open it for discussion. Anybody has specific discussion, any of the council? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Or ordinance forty-nine thirteen is approved and I'm calling for one point one H.
One point one H is the preliminary and final plat approval for Crown Point Face Eight subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of five point four, five point seven acres out of Lot two-twenty-one Johnny Cherry. It is currently zoned R-one-A large lot single family. The developer is Chris Ross. The engineer is Urban Infrastructure Group. This property is located approximately one thirty, about a mile north of Business eighty-three along the east side of Stewart Road. The developer proposes fourteen large lot single-family residential lots. It has city water and sewer. Staff is recommending approval, subject to paying capital, sewer recovery, park fees, street lights, a total of ten thousand two hundred and fifty, dedication of water rights, compliance with model subdivision rules, compliance with the city street alignment policy. Staff has noted that for water, the developer has raised its street on Colonial Avenue so that the water can flow southwest to the existing two-lit on Madison Hope Lane. And as a secondary measure, they have put a plat note on the plat that states that they can only build fifty percent of the lot to help retain water within the lot. This matter is now before you.
Uh, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody against this, uh, this preliminary and final plat approval? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final plat approval? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final plat approval? Ms. Carrillo, is there any indication anybody from the public is, uh, giving us a, a statement?
No, Mayor, there's not.
I'm going to call, close the public hearing and I'm going to open it specifically to any of the city council members.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a floor to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. And this I open it for discussion. Any questions?
Question here. How is it enforced, uh, plat notes that are reported?
At the building permit stage, we will be, we will be making a note on the building permit and then the, we'll make sure, the inspectors make sure of that they're only constructing fifty percent. We're going to be asking for, uh, to submit a calculation so they could let us know how much is of the square footage of the home and how much is open land.
Uh, yes, and also I noticed that, uh, in the plat notes, it does say that the, the elevation of the home cannot be more than eighteen inches, uh, from the curb. Is that something that you all take a look at as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then that, that's all for my questions.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Garcia. Any other, uh, specific question? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries. I, item number one point one H is approved, Ms. Deluna, and I'm calling for one point one I.
Item one point one I is a preliminary and final plat approval for Rio Plata subdivision. This is a re-subdivision of twenty-five point two fifty-nine acres of land out of the south end of Forzón fifty-two. This is own PUD, nine-unit development. The developer is Road Enterprise and the engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This property is located near the northwest corner of South Inspiration Road and Mall One South along the north side of Mall One South. The developer proposes a hundred and thirty-two single-family residential lots. It, it has city water and sewer. They are asking for a variance to have lots with width ranges from twenty feet to forty-five feet or fifty feet are required on the master PUD. It is noted that most of these lots are irregular and a total square feet of most of this lot is greater than most of the neighboring, the Lotus subdivision, where they're fifty by a hundred or a total of five thousand square feet. This lot exceeds the PUD requirements on square footage. Staff is recommending approval, subject to compliance, uh, they must pay capital sewer recovery fees and street signs, which is a total of three thousand two hundred, the dedication of water rights, and compliance with the model subdivision rules. This matter is now before you.
Thank you, Ms. Deluna. Uh, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final approval?
Hello, this is Mike Rhodes. I'd like to say a word about, uh, this design. Um, it, it look, may look a little unusual to you, where this is the first of these cove communities we'll be bringing to Mission. Um, some of you may have seen what we're doing out at Trace Lagos and McAllen. Uh, the reason for these irregular lots is in, in order to get, uh, these curvy streets that look really nice, you end up with either outside pies or inside pies. So some are real wide fronts and real wide, some are narrow fronts. Um, it's, we've been doing these communities for years. This is just the first one we've done in Mission. It's, it's, uh, we're proud to bring this content to the nation and we've been able to, uh, you know, last year we were, uh, we sold a little, right at exactly a hundred houses of this, so we were able to put a hundred, a hundred, uh, families in brand-new homes there, which represented about twenty-five percent of the new homes that were built in City of Mission. Um, we believe this will increase that, uh, velocity and we hope to get to about a hundred and thirty this year. So, um, if there's any question, Fred, Kurt is also on the line if there's any engineering questions, but, um, it's something we've been done, we've been doing for a long time in this design.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there anybody in favor or against the preliminary and final plat approval?
I move for approval as presented.
I need to call, this, this is a public hearing. I need to call it three times and close, and close it before, uh, okay? I'm, is there any, eh, this is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against preliminary and final plat, plat approval? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this preliminary and final plat approval? Ms. Carrillo, is there anybody else in the public that's going to give us any statements?
Uh, no, Mayor, there is not.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carrillo. So I'll close this public hearing and I'll open it for a direct, uh, feedback from any of the city council. Ms. Garcia, you have the floor.
I, I move for approval as presented.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, and yes, I open it for final discussion by any of the city council members. There being no discussion, I, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries and, and the preliminary and final plat approval for Rio Plata has been approved, Ms. Deluna, and thank you, Mr. Rhodes, Kurt, for your investment. Okay. This concludes, uh, one point oh of the agenda, and I'm moving to point, two point zero on the consent agenda item. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions, including but not limited to rescheduling an item in its entirety or a future date or time. The city council may elect to go into executive session or any item whether or not such item is posted as an executive, uh, session item at any time during a meeting when authorized by the permission of the Open Meetings Act. So, council, uh, what is your, I'm asking for your guidance for item consent agenda item two point one, two point two, two point three, two point four. You carries the resolution number sixteen fifty-six. Do I hear a?
I move to approve our consent agenda item.
In its entirety?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Plata. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve two point one, two point two, two point three, two point four, including resolution sixteen fifty-six. I open it for discussion.
I couldn't email.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries item two point one, two point two, two point three, two point four, as resolution sixteen fifty-six has been approved. And I'm gonna move over to three point oh and three, and call for id- agenda item three point one, and we're gonna ask Mr. Silva to, to present this item.
Afternoon, Mayor and City Council, we have Lee McCormick on the line, uh, he'll be presenting item three point one as a resolution, uh, related to bonds for Republic Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Lee McCormick, I hope you and your families are doing well these days. Uh, item three point one is a resolution for the City of Mission approving the final resolution that was adopted by the Mission Economic Development Corporation. This is, uh, almost identical to the February twenty-fourth approval that the city gave on this exact item. Uh, city council approvals like this are only good for thirty days, and this transaction was delayed because of COVID nineteen and the financial markets. So we have to come back to city council to get another thirty day extension, so it's identical to what you've seen before. Uh, as before, there's eighty-six million dollars of new money financing being utilized at twenty-nine of Republic Services locations here in Texas. And they are also refunding forty-nine point four million, uh, which represents twenty-six of their facilities here in Texas. Uh, these refunding bonds are from the Series Two Thousand and Eighty-A bonds that were maturing this year. So the nice thing about this is they're actually extending the maturity of those bonds that were gonna, um, expire and roll off. Uh, now the M E D C will get a new issuance fee and ongoing annual fees related to those refunded bonds. As before, there is no risk, no liability to the city with regards to approving the, uh, resolution, and it will not affect the city's bond capacity. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Uh, this is open up for discussion or for, uh, council direction?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and, and a second to approve resolution one six five seven, sixteen fifty-seven, and this is open up for discussion. Any discussion by any of the council members? There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Uh, motion carries, resolution sixteen fifty-seven is approved, and I'm calling for three point two. Mr. Silva?
Oh, Mayor, City Council, we also have Lee presenting this item in regards to, uh, a resolution for bonds on behalf of Waste Management.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is very similar to what we just approved. Uh, as with Republic Waste Management, uh, has, uh, delayed their closing of the transaction due to COVID nineteen and, uh, the financial markets being a little bit uneasy these days. The, um, this is very similar to the resolution approved by City of, City Council on February twenty-fourth. Uh, there is some adjustments to the par amounts, which I'll, I'll note here quickly. The, uh, new money amount went from sixty-seven million to fifty-seven million, and the refinancing amount went from fifty-eight million to fifty-two million, so they did downsize their projects a little bit. Um, other than that, it's very similar, the, uh, the total fees to the M E D C, um, went from four hundred and ninety-seven thousand to four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Other than that, the project is the same.
Thank you, do I, do I have any directions from the council?
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a second, and this, uh, open it for any specific discussion by any of the council members? There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, resolution sixteen fifty-eight is approved, and, um, and thank you for, uh, for, uh, approving it. Thank you, Mr. McCormick, for your information. I'm calling item three point three, Ms. Vella?
Item three point three is the tax collection report for the month of March twenty twenty. The total twenty nineteen tax levy is twenty-two million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents, and the amount of collections as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty, is twenty-one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents, which represents ninety-two point forty-two percent of the twenty nineteen tax levy. Total delinquent tax levy was two million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, and the amount of collections as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty, is two hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents, which represents eleven point ninety-eight percent of the total delinquent tax levies. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, and three point three is approved, Ms. Vella, and three point four, Ms. Deluna?
Item three point four is the final plat approval for Las Comardees Number Six subdivision. It's a re-subdivision of a forty acre tract of land being all of lots nine, ten, eleven, and thirteen out of block three, protection garden subdivision. It's in R E T J. The developer is Bali Calicha Products Inc., engineer is Melvin and Hunt. This property is located along the east side of Iowa Road, approximately a quarter mile south of Mile Three Road. City of, it has city of Mission Sewer C C N. The developer proposed sixty-six single family residential lots, all exceeding area requirement. It, it connects to an existing eight inch line located law, along Iowa, Iowa Road to provide water services. Staff recommends approval, subject to meeting the model subdivision rules, complying with the street alignment policy and meeting any comments from the county planning department. This is not a public hearing item and this item is before you.
Thank you, Ms. Deluna. Do, any directions coming up? We have a motion to, to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Vella, you recognized, and this is open up for direct, uh, questions by any of the council members? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
I have a question, I have a question.
Oh, no, let me re- reverse, Ms. Ochoa, you got the floor.
No, it's Ms. Garcia, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Garcia.
Uh, I have a quick, quick question, um, so it's our sewer C C N, but and it's serviced by La Jolla Water, is that correct? Or Awasad, I'm sorry.
It's Awasad, it's serviced by Awasad.
So, um, were there, um, uh, fire hydrants or service, whatever they're, they're called now, not, not water?
There are no fire hydrants provided for this R E T J subdivision.
That wasn't required by the county?
They are filling stations.
They have, yeah, filling stations, that, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yes.
But no filling station, it doesn't require any interlocal agreement with the City of Mission?
Do they require any interlocal agreement?
Yes, they do.
Uh, what was the, the response, sorry?
Yes, yes, they do, they do require an interlocal agreement.
And it's not here on the agenda item right now, or are you gonna come back with it, or?
It'll, it'll be brought up later, later on when, when it's ready.
Okay, I think that's what you're looking for, right, Ms. Garcia?
Yes, I just wanted to be sure that, that they weren't, the, the filling stations were, were included.
Yes, ma'am, they are.
Thank you, uh, any, any other, any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, three point four is approved, calling for three point five, Chief Dominguez?
Yes, Mayor of City Council, item three point five is authorization to enter into a memorandum of, of understanding between the City of Edinburgh Police Department and the City of Mission Police Department for seizures and forfeitures were jointly by both agencies in accordance with the Texas Code of Criminal Procedures under chapter fifty-nine, forfeiture of contraband. The Mission Police Department, uh, criminal narcotics investigators along with City of Edinburgh criminal narcotic investigators were simultaneously conducting an investigation of a Mission resident. A search warrant was executed at the Mission resident by both agencies on April the third, twenty twenty. Narcotics were seized as well as eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars in U S currency. The M O U will establish protocols to follow for the purpose of filing jointly for the seizures and or forfeitures through the Dell County District Attorney's Office asset forfeiture section. Staff and the city manager recommend approval, uh, of this item.
Uh, uh, thank you, Chief, be- before I open it, I have one question, Chief, uh, and this has reciprocity, that if we go to City of Edinburgh, it works both ways?
Yes, sir.
The M O U?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Council, uh, looking for direction?
I move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do it in a second, and this is open up for discussion. There being no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, three point five is approved, and calling for three point six, Chief Dominguez?
Yes, item three point six is authorization to put into service one German Shepherd K nine to the City of Mission Police Department K nine program. The Mission Police Department has adopted a three and a half year old German Shepherd by the name of Petra by the United States Customs and Border Protection Office in Brownsville, Texas. Petra is a trained narcotics detection, uh, dog and is able to locate marijuana, cocaine, heroin, ecstasy, and fentanyl. Petra will be partnered with Mission Police K nine officer Joshua Jimenez. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I move to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve, three point six, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, uh, and this is open up for final, uh, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Uh, motion carries, three point six is approved, and I'm calling for three point seven, Chief Dominguez?
Yes, Mayor of City Council, item three point seven is authorization to retire Police K nine Ben from active duty and authorization to have Mission Police Officer Charles Lopez adopt Police K nine Ben after signing a whole harmless agre- agreement. The Mission Police Department, uh, adopted Ben back on July twenty-seventh of twenty sixteen from the Transportation Security Administration at Lackland Air Force Base in San Antonio. Ben was assigned to the Anza Duos International Bridge with the Mission Police K nine handler Joshua Jimenez. Uh, Ben specialized in explosive detection and served the citizens of Mission for three years and eight months. Ben has, uh, been unable to recertify with a number of attempts. Therefore, the handler and the K nine supervisor are both recommending retirement. Mission Police Officer Charles Lo- uh, Lopez is willing to adopt Ben. Staff and city manager recommend approval of this item.
I move to approve.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, uh, open it for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Uh, motion carries, three point seven is approved, Chief Dominguez, and I'm calling for three point eight, Ms. Longoria?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, item three point eight is resolution number, I believe it's next sixteen fifty-nine.
That's correct.
Amendment resolution one thousand eighty-two for the Citizens Advisory Committee bylaws, Article Three, Membership, Section One and Three. Section one and three of the Citizens Advisory Committee bylaws states that the committee is composed of twelve members from four quadrants appointed by mayor and city council. Seven members are required for quorum. Due to concerns for lack of quorum to conduct meetings and public hearings, it is being recommended to lower the members to nine, requiring five members for quorum and appointments to be made from the at-large citywide pool of qualified voters. C A C approves staff's recommendation on April fourteen, week twenty. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Before I open it up, uh, I have a question, Ms. Longoria, that, that mean that, uh, that the, uh, the, uh, committee member doesn't have to reside in the area of the quadrant that, uh, anymore, if we pass this?
That is correct, all nine members would be from the at, at-large, citywide.
And if we were, and if we were to, uh, to appoint all the members from the northeast side of the quadrant, would, uh, the federal government have a, a problem with that? Because that, I know that, that's the reason why we went to the quadrants.
Uh, no, other cities, um, as I understand it, other cities have it that way as well.
And then, have you, have you checked? Have, did you check with Scott?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor?
I, I'll open it for the council, go ahead.
Uh, Mayor, this is Gus.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez, go ahead.
Uh, the intention of this is not to, is not to have, uh, all members be from one quadrant, because at times there are difficulties in building a quadrant. So, uh, we're still gonna be very vigilant to ensure that all platters are represented. It's in the event that we cannot find one in a quadrant, it'll give us the opportunity to at-large that spot.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second, and this is open up for, uh, final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, resolution sixteen fifty-nine is approved, Ms. Longoria, and I'm calling for three point nine.
Uh, thank you. Three point nine is approval of amendment for citizens' participation plan. C A C held a public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty, to solicit input on the proposed revisions to the citizens' participation plan. The C P P outlines the process to follow for solicitation of comments during public hearings when implementing changes, revisions, as it relates to HUD required documents, which are the consolidated plan and annual action plan to include the C P P. This amendment revises the Citizens Advisory Committee section to be consistent with the revisions previously presented and to amend the public hearing requirement to allow virtual public hearings to extract the features to lower draft, propose, or amend documents during declared disasters, emergencies, or pandemics if national, state, county, local health authorities recommend social distancing and limit, limiting public gatherings and provide reasonable notification sets for citizens, timely responses from local officials, and public ac- access to all questions and responses. No comments were received during the public hearing. C A C approved revisions on April thirteenth, fourteenth, twenty twenty. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion?
Mayor? Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve three point nine, and this is open it for final discussion. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries, three point nine is approved, Ms. Longoria, and I'm calling for three point ten, Ms. Carrillo?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, good afternoon. This is the lease agreement between the City of Mission and the Children's Advocacy Center, and this is for the rental of the Strickland Building located at eleven sixteen North Conway. This agreement would be for a period of three years, ending December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, I must advise that if you are inclined to approve, please include in the motion a finding that such a lease is in the public interest of the City of Mission. Uh, this rental amount would be a dollar a year, and staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Uh, yes, Mayor, uh, being that this item is, uh, is directly beneficial to the City of Mission, I, uh, uh, move to approve the lease agreement between the City of Mission and the Children's Advocacy Center.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Uh, before I move out right along, uh, Ms. Carrillo, it, does it qualify? Uh before I move out right along, uh Ms. Carrillo, it, does it qualify?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mayor, it does.
Okay. And I'll open it for discussion. Any, anybody wants to, any specific information? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries three point ten is approved, Ms. Carrillo, and I'm calling for three point eleven, and there'll be resolution sixteen sixty. Mr. Cardosa?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item three point eleven is the approval of resolution sixteen sixty, uh amending resolution sixteen fifty five with the City Council of the City of Mission adopting the State of Texas Executive Order G sixteen and the County Alidares Third Amendment Emergency Order twenty dash zero zero four, instituting subsequent measures due to the public health emergency regarding COVID nineteen. On April seventeenth, Governor Greg Abbott issued State of Texas Executive Order G sixteen related to work safe strategies, reopening of select services open Texas. And on April twenty third, twenty twenty, uh County Judge Richard Cortez uh issued a Third Amendment Emergency reopen services order, these order to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty, eleven fifty nine P M. An emergency meeting will be held in the city to adopt borders extended beyond April thirtieth, twenty twenty. This item now is before you.
Do I hear a motion?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion and do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance correction, resolution sixteen sixty. And this I open it for discussion. There be no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries resolution sixteen sixty is approved, Mr. Cardosa.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm heading on to four point, four point zero unfinished business. And we have unfinished business, so I'm gonna move it over. Five point oh to routine matters. I'm gonna call for item five point one, City Manager Perez. Any comment?
Uh yes, sir. I just wanted to uh to advise everyone that looking at the new executive order for the governor that he announced earlier this afternoon uh to be able to uh adopt uh something similar. Obviously, we do uh want to consider the safety of our citizens. And so we are looking at that plan diligently to be able to adopt, uh to adapt to our community. Uh again, uh we will be uh announcing that information as well. As soon as we uh, we will be scheduling a a meeting to adopt uh the plan uh as well during this week, uh possibly uh Wednesday. Uh we do um want to make sure that that we go through the plan the governor sent out. We we have been analyzing that and going through the plan to to be able to uh it, for it to adapt to our community. So again, just wanted to make that, we'll make that information available to everyone. As soon as we have that, uh we will be posting it on our website and social media outlets as well as uh any information that uh uh, any questions that might be uh from the citizens or the community. They can uh reach out our our hotline that is available throughout the week uh for any questions regarding that. So again, uh we will make that uh information available. We will have a special meeting during the week to be able to adopt uh the plan for our community. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Moving right along, I'm gonna call for five point two, Mayor's comment. I want to let you all know that uh I have received the uh, the uh City of Mission Comprehensive Storm Drainage Assessment. It is uh in in the draft form and a non-adopted form format. So I I want to let the council know and the public know that I, that I'm calling a special meeting for a a week from this Wednesday. Uh and it's gonna be a joint meeting between the planning and zoning and the drainage committee and the city council. I wanted it to, I don't want it as a workshop. I want it as a special meeting because I want to be able to put in agenda, the agenda item to adopt this uh, this, this uh uh comprehensive storm drainage assessment. It it's in entirety, so we can begin to implement it just the way we've been doing of of updating our records as 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 far as it, so it can be a, uh the the formal document that is, that has been accepted. So I just want to let you all know and that that that's coming around a week from Wednesday, Ms. Carrillo. If you want to note down the uh, the, I'm gonna ask the council to, to, would uh, would a three thirty meeting be a good time for you all?
Next Wednesday? It's coming Wednesday?
No, a week from Wednesday. We already have a council meeting this, this Wednesday, but.
On the sixth?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'll be okay on three thirty.
Three thirty.
I'm good for three thirty.
Yes, uh, Mr. Vela?
I'm good, too.
Ms. Ochoa?
That's fine, Mayor.
Do you, Ms. Carrillo, we can open it and call it the, I I just want one agenda item. Unless at the time we have a very uh emergency item, we'll add another one. Because I want, I want the, the, the producers of this, of this uh uh document to be able to get, give us a thirty minute com- comprehensive uh uh plan and at least have another thirty minutes of open discussion with them of what we're gonna do the, in the, in the future. Okay, that's one of the, the other one is.
Mayor, Mayor, real quick, is that, is that gonna be a Zoom meeting or is that gonna be a regular meeting of in person, face to face?
Uh i- if we are open, we'll do face to face, and if not, we'll do the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
It depends on uh, on the next item that I was gonna talk about, and that is that the, the Texas Helping Texans, uh, the governor's report to open Texas was published today, April the twenty seventh. All of us were reading it tomorrow. We start at ten A M. in the morning to begin to break it down and decipher it uh i- in a joint effort. But individually, we're reading it and making sure that that, that we clearly understand what's going on with this. Because uh I, on Wednesday, uh in the special meeting, I want to be able to adopt the, the same, the same procedures that the governor has uh, has, has noted in this a- 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 as part of our, our section of opening mission. You, you know, so uh just F Y I, uh uh as far as that is concerned. You know, because we do need to have, and and the fact that we have the, the business, uh, the business, uh individuals uh appointed already in the recovery plan that the, that Brenda Enriquez uh reported today. We're gonna use them to to guide us through this process and and to see, a- a- and at the same time, uh the reason why I put it as an agenda item for a special meeting is because if there's any action that we need to take to adjust, to restrict more, we cannot restrict less, but we can restrict more. A- and and at that time, we'll take, we'll take the, the necessary action, given the fact that, that all the council members, at least the majority of them, are in agreement with, with the restrictions or just adopt what the governor's uh ri- report has indicated. This, this report will be effective May the first, which is Friday. So we're gonna have to work this week to, to get our own plan on how Mission's gonna open and how we're gonna handle that. And I think that's, that's task at hem at, at hand at ten A M. tomorrow morning. I don't have anything else except that, thank you for everybody. Thank you all the first responders for, for a wonderful uh, a, a, a wonderful uh efforts that they have been making ti- time in and time out and, and taking care of uh, of our citizens, you know? So without further ado, I'm gonna stop at five point two and move to five point three. And I'm gonna start with Mr. Vela. Mr. Vela, you, you're, you're, you're the first one, if you wanna.
Okay, I just want to thank everyone for all their hard work, and that, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Uh this is uh, Ms. Garcia, you're, you're next.
Y- yes, uh Mayor, do, uh can the rest of the council have a copy of the drainage dr- assessment report? Not a copy, but at least email to us so that we can review it before the next Wednesday's meeting?
Yes, uh I, I will, I will get it scanned tomorrow and uh, uh, get it scanned tomorrow and I'll email it to the council member.
I, I can forward, I can forward that this afternoon, ma'am.
And not only, not only to the council members, uh, Mr. Perez, if you, if you're gonna forward that one, if you already have it done, uh forward it also to the planning and zoning committee and forward it to the drainage committee. So we can uh formulate questions and, and look at the, the final figure at the end of the, of the projects.
Yes, sir, we will.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Anything else, Ms. Garcia?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plata.
No comments, just, let's work hard, stay safe. And may God continue blessing our community.
Thank you, Mr. Plata. Ms. Ochoa?
No, Mayor, just reiterating what everybody already said, just to stay safe and be healthy.
Thank you, Ms. Ochoa. I'm moving to six point oh and uh under executive session pursuant to the B T C A Government Code, Section fifty five point zero zero one. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'm moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll be back in a.